Ready? Good. Under the provisions of NJSA 10:4-6, notice of the time and place of the meeting given by way of annual meeting notice that Star-Ledger Courier News and Home News posted at Borough Hall. Salute to the flag.
By allegiance, here's the flag of the United States of America, a true republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The mayor is away this week. I'm filling in. If, Kelsey, can you take the role?
Okay. All righty. Mayor Mikhailich, Council President Conahan.
Here.
Councilman Carnes.
Here.
Councilman DeSenza.
Present.
Councilman DeSino.
Here.
Councilman Doty.
Here.
Councilman Graves.
Here.
Administrator La Place. And Atreides Corzini.
Well, we have a substitute.
Yeah. John Delucat, thank you and welcome. Okay, no presentations tonight for appointments. We do have a number of appointments, so if somebody can make a motion on these.
Motion. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, seeing none, hearing none. All five are approved. Can we do all five at once? Okay. Okay, moving right along. Proclamations, we have none. Ordinances for introduction, we do have one. Kelsey, if you want to read that?
Ordinance 215725, an ordinance fixing and determining the salary range of certain officers and employees of the Borough of Middlesex.
Okay. Ask, let's see, I need a motion.
Motion. Second.
Second, okay. Any comments? Nothing. Okay. Kelsey, could you please take the role?
Council President Conahan.
Yes.
Councilman Carnes.
Yes.
Councilman DeSenza.
Yes.
Councilman DeSino.
Yes.
Councilman Doty.
Yes.
Councilman Graves.
Yes.
Okay, the hearing will be, public hearing will be October 28th, our next meeting. Moving down for number eight, ordinances for public hearing and final adoption. Kelsey, you want to read this one as well?
Ordinance 215625, an ordinance amending Chapter 86 of the Municipal Code of the Borough of Middlesex to clarify certain provisions thereof.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion on this?
Motion.
Public. Right.
Motion to open for public. Motion from Joe?
Second.
Kevin? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The floor is open for any comments for ordinance 2157, 2156-25. Okay, seeing no comments. Is there a motion to close the public?
Motion. Second.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adopt ordinance 2156-25?
Motion. Second.
Second, okay. Kelsey, can you take the role for me?
Council President Conahan.
Yes.
Councilman Carnes.
Yes.
Councilman DeSenza.
Yes.
Councilman DeSino.
Yes.
Councilman Doty.
Yes.
Councilman Graves.
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes. Adoption of minutes. We have two tonight. We'll do one at a time. Approval for the September 9th regular and executive meeting minutes. Can I ask for a motion?
Motion. Second.
Second, okay. Any comments on the minutes? Good, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Okay, approval of the September 23rd regular and executive meeting minutes. I need a motion.
Motion. Second.
Second, Joe. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Moving down to the mayor's report. He is not here. Okay. Moving down, all right. I'm going to start it off with council member reports. Is there a list for, okay, just use, all right, so my report, so I, a couple of things I wanted to offer my deepest condolences out to the, to the Vitri family for the recent passing of Tony. Most of us knew him as Red Vitri. He was a part-time code enforcer in town, but more importantly, he was, he was a, a longtime volunteer on several boards and committees. That's how I met him years ago. He was also a very well-respected and adored neighbor and resident and, and friend. I want to congratulate, and I'm not going to spend too much time because Councilman Doty may have some stuff on this, but Chief Bartuck and our fire department for being the recipient of a $400,000 Safer Grant, which is, I think, top two or top three of all time for grant sizes for us. Our next pillar award will go to Bill Winkelman for his decades and decades of service on our fire department. He's at the Pierce Firehouse. That'll be actually at the November 25th meeting, so not the next meeting, but two meetings from now. Also, at our November 25th meeting, we will hear from Chief Geist in a workshop session on recommendations for making our streets, sidewalks, and parks safer in relation to e-bikes and scooters. So we're going to workshop that topic on November 25th. Okay, suburban engineering, and Joe, you may touch upon this too, they'll be here on, at our next meeting, October 28th. I just wanted to let everybody know for the, they're going to present their final concept plan for Victor Crowe Park, the master plan. Obviously, there's still, we can edit it as much as we want, but this is after three public meetings, this will be their presentation to the governing body. Our joint land use board will be making a new recommendation related to the contractor storage yard ordinance that we adopted in March, so we will reintroduce that on October 28th. And thank you, Councilman DeSino. Bobby is shepherding that through the land use board. The next Friends of the Library program, which is titled History of Broadway and Musical Theater, that will be performed next Wednesday, the 22nd, at 2:00 PM in the community room. Again, I've done this for the last couple of meetings. I want to thank Karen Wick in our construction office. She's been picking up Michelle's responsibilities for the last four to six weeks, maybe longer. And I know Matthews Dillingham's helped out as well, so I want to thank them both, but especially Karen. And then, I also, lastly, I want to make the following statement on behalf of the entire governing body regarding the change with the Borough Business Administrator. Pursuant to NJSA 48:9-136, the Borough has parted ways with Administrator Michael La Place. In accordance with that statute, Michael remain, will remain on the Borough payroll until December 31st, 2025. We wish Michael well and thank him for the, for his service to Middlesex Borough. Our Borough Attorney has advised us to refrain from commenting on any non-retirement employment separation, so we have no further comment. In the meantime, we will be appointing Police Chief Matthew Geist as Acting Business Administrator and DPW Superintendent Lenny Vidal as Acting Deputy Business Administrator. These appointments are indefinite and will be addressed periodically in the months to come. We are fortunate that Matt and Lenny are proven department heads with long histories in Middlesex, which has made it possible to temporary fill, temporarily fill the BA position internally. Okay, that's all I have, and I'm going to move down to Councilman Carnes.
Thank you, Council President. Start with seniors. Check out their calendar. They are chock full of amazing things to do. The Department, Mr. Del Moreno, Melissa, let me know that Medicare Open Enrollment Starts tomorrow, and a great opportunity to review your plans. Call the senior center to make an appointment. Another one is the Middlesex Ukulele Group, Strings and Smiles, will be performing for the Recreation Toddler Play Group on Tuesday, 10/21. They are practicing for their upcoming performance at Winter Wonderland. For the Film Commission, thank you, everybody, so much for your, your patience and your vision for getting New Jersey Film ready. This is something that's been worked on a while, and it's here. I'm excited, very happy that it's happening. Something I'm even more excited about that dates back to Councilman Jason Carr and myself, as I took town, if we are now live streaming. So now everything will go to our YouTube channel. You won't have to look at my awkward camera angles from my phone that are like half people there, half people there. You can come back and review anytime. This is a great step for transparency for us, and I'm very happy that it's happening. We are definitely in a transitional stage, but I am very comfortable and happy with the decisions that this council has made for our future. And my brain went sideways. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman DeSenza?
Ask the Swimpool Commission members will be at our next council meeting to review 2025 and plans for 2026. Parks and suburban meeting, as Council President Michael talked about, meeting was on October 7th. It was well-attended, and findings are published on the website. SWAC meeting was held today. Both Lenny and I attended. Financial review, we, Bobby DeSino, Councilman DeSino and myself, with our CFO, Carolyn, reviewed the first three quarters of the year. The Borough is financially doing well. Few categories are over budget, but on a whole, okay. Mostly legal, and that has to do with the contracts. We did three contracts this year.
Sorry, Tito.
That's raised a little bit there, but on a whole, we're in good shape. Library meeting was held last night in the community room. Is in use. It's almost 100% complete. Only a few minor repairs remain. The water heater had a leak, and DPW came to rescue. Problem was discovered on a Friday afternoon at 1:00 PM, and Lenny was able to provide a crew of four to wet back the area, and in, and we're in the process of getting the heater replaced. Thank you again to DPW for their great work. Recreation, wrestling and basketball registration is open. Please join recreation under the stars on the football field on Thursday, October 23rd for a Halloween classic, Ultergeist. Winter Wonderland Bonfire is scheduled on Sunday, December 7th, and we're looking for crafters and food vendors to help out. That's my report.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. Councilman DeSino?
Yeah, not much stuff. Like, Public Works Monthly Report. They've been replacing the trees, shade trees that were taken down over the years. They've planted 28 two-inch caliber trees at various locations requested by residences. Also, the firewood, firewood is back. We're back. Machines working, so we have firewood, have recycled again, and the leaf bags are also available at the recycle center. 1,280 storm drains cleaned in the town this year. As far as bulk pickup, there is one more month of bulk pickup before we transition to leaf pickup, so. Sanitation is busy as usual. Parks have began their fall cleanup. Rural departments are preparing the snow equipment for winter. Operating the brine tanks and making sure all the plows and all the trucks, sanders and softeners are working. Taking down some dead trees around town and also repairing puddles, so you guys are good. Jayla, Mike, like Mike said, October 22nd, we're reviewing the contractor storage yard thing, and we'll do that at the next council meetings. As far as Environmental Commission, the tree giveaway is this Saturday, from 10:00 to 1:00. Also, the tree planting of the remaining trees will be done on Raritan Avenue, October 28th. That's approximately 200 trees, so that's going to be an interesting day. Next meeting is October 21st, and that's all I have. Mike?
The, the tree, tree giveaway is in Mountain View Park, in the back?
Right there. That's the tree farm.
Oh, it's on Rock Lane, outside the tree farm?
The tree farm, yeah.
Okay. All right, Bobby, thank you. Councilman Doty?
Yeah, two quick ones. I have the court report for September 25. The tickets and complaints, 233 tickets, 20 parking violations, 211 moving, 13 DWIs, six criminal complaints, 11 local ordinance violations, one health ticket issued, which you hardly ever see, so obviously that's working, our health department, 20 zoning issues, so Matthew has been busy. August, the court, they had four sessions, two in-person, two virtual, 305 defendants, 388 cases deposed of this month, 10 DWI deposed. I know they had a DWI blitz the one night. I came there, and they said that's all they were doing. It was one of the extra days. Money's collected, 25,473,40, $11,257.64 is ours. I also have the fire department for September. This is good news, only 28 calls, which means nobody's trying to set anything on fire. Accidents are down, that's usually a good thing. Alarm system activations, they had no fire unintentional, six of those, smoke scare, odor of smoke, too. They had two grass fires, two dumpster fires. They had two motor vehicle accidents with injuries and three with no injuries for the month. It also has a couple of things. The chief always writes that they have participated in it. Don, first of all, they would like to thank everybody for attending the Food Truck Festival. It was a success for them. They had quite a good crowd. I don't think they have exactly the count of what came in the place, but it was a few thousand people, from what they were saying. It was a very, a good night for them. And stay tuned, because I believe they want to do this more, maybe even multiple times a year, and it'll get bigger and better. There was a structured drill. Most people must have saw that on Raritan Avenue. That was on September 24th in 1900. That is the house that was being torn down due to Blue Acres, and they allowed us to go in there and do a drill, like it was a fire, and looks like Swiss cheese now. They were at the September 11th memorial on the 18th. Friend of a Homer is on Six Wilton reported that a 40-yard dumpster, that's one of the dumpster fires, was on fire. They showed up, they got it under control within a few minutes, turned it over to the county fire marshal for investigation. They were dispatched on the 11th in the areas of 5 and 9 Factory Lane for two separate brush fires. Those are the two grass fires that they reported. They got them extinguished immediately and made sure that, there was even some rare tie smoldering. They extinguished them, and then they were cleared within an hour. Also, on the 11th of September, they were dispatched mutual aid into Denellen for a dumpster fire with possible exposure to a building. They arrived, they were able to get it under control, and everything was cleared, and it was turned over to the fire official. Along the lines of the grant, the chief writes, "On a separate note, I am happy to announce that on September 24th, Middlesex Fire Department was awarded the 2024 Safer Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Grant totaling $400,000. This grant will fund our response stipend, equip new firefighters with turnout gear, fund new fire department member physicals, and employ a recruitment slash retention officer for our department to assist in recruiting new firefighters. This grant will be awarded to us over a four-year time period starting January 1st, 2026, at $100,000 a year." He said, "With this grant, Middlesex Fire Department has been awarded just under $615,000 in grant funds in the last three years." They've been very aggressive going after this, along with our grant writer, and it saved, I know to borrow, tons of money. And this will support the paper call that we have on the books for the next four years at this point. So, good luck to them, and hopefully they can get things turned around and a bunch of people in there. That's all I have.
Thanks, Ken. Councilman Graves?
Update from the construction department. From July 1st to September 30th, new permits issued, 180. Updates was 37. Types of work, additions was two, alterations 213, and demolitions two. Revenue from various sources, building, 27,293. Electrical, $18,010. Plumbing, 9451. Fire, 7875. Mechanical, 8,400. DCA, 6926. And certificates, 550. For a total revenue collected of $78,505. That was from the subcodes, building, 67 applications. Electrical, 131. Plumbing, 71. Fire, 51. And mechanical, 68. Total value of all the construction submitted was $4,599,010. For the zoning violations, the amount disposed in the one quartet in a month, fines was $1,000. Cost, $224. Miscellaneous, $24 for a total value collected, $1,264. The rental registrations collected between June and July, total $2,063. And Board of Health, the meeting is the third Thursday of the month at 6:30 in the community room, so that's this Thursday, if anyone's interested in attending. Raby's Clinic will be the first Saturday of the month, November, from 10 to noon, free for residents. As far as the Shade Tree Commission, they had some discussions about sidewalks, which I'll be bringing up with the council, and a number of trees are being removed and trimmed by the end of the year. Their meeting is the second Thursday of the month in this room at 7:00 PM. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ken.
Council President, I forgot the arts and cultures.
Yeah, good.
So I apologize. The arts and cultures holding this Saturday, or Saturday, October the 18th, they're doing a pumpkin painting program for kids four plus at the library with one of their members, Lauren Freozzi. Lauren's going to be taking care of that. She's amazing working with the kids. And also, they are doing, the beautification is out looking for spooky houses and those type of things. So if you are aware of any houses that are worthy of coming back to the home decoration program, I know the beautification committee within Culture and Arts is working on that now, so feel free to email them.
Okay. Thanks, Joe. Okay, Administrator Geist?
President, COVID 9, the mayor council, DeSino, Lenny Vidal, and officials from Middlesex County Department of Fire and Protection, complaints about industrial facilities, meaning the results of recent concerns regarding air quality, noise, and other issues. We need to establish a clear protocol for plain reporting and communication channels within the Borough and Department of Protection. In their complaints, I recommend that our community report it to Police Department and City DPD, their toll brief number 18771 DPD, or through their mobile phone app, 1DPD. That information is posted on the website and is also put out in the Borough Police Department social media pages. Additionally, the Police Department, we issue a memo to our staff to explain the process for reporting complaints. I thought it was important that our officers be concerned with conditions that are questionable, that we can report it in the manner of the public, hoping that has some additional weight to these reports. We'll have to follow up with the committee to monitor our progress with DPD, and Lenny Vidal has said that for us, there's a large number of Middlesex County and DPD who stay involved. On September 25th, Lenny Vidal attended a virtual meeting with our partners at DOT regarding train preemption, traffic signals, northbound traffic, etc., and the river crossing. New Jersey trains, the Conrail trains trigger the preemption, preemption signal, track clearance light. Time is potentially increased to 45 seconds or 30 seconds to clear the human traffic. By completing this change, the DOT will be satisfied of concerns at this crossing for the signal specifically for the preemption. This is in addition to the recent upgrades throughout the last year for GPS directions, lighting, all the signs and striping, or recent peeling markers. So there's been a significant amount of resources to put in to make that area safer and light as well. Today, I had an initial meeting with Matt Dillingham, Caroline Benson, and Michelle Correlli, and Lenny Vidal to discuss our planning of 2026 and the registration. The team has already begun work prepared in January, starting this registration process. Upgrades in Mountain View Park are in progress. The finished equipment is installed. Drainage system is being installed. This will be to help with the flooding. We waited for it to install the new restrooms, the PACG. They got it disconnected power, the lines cleared, all restrooms are within, by the way, the frame. The Parks Improvement Committee, that decided to reinforce the pitch from the park to make meaningful future improvements. The mayor council also had consensus to review those improvements. Big Central Park Master Plan is to be complete. The next meeting is October 28th. We'll finalize the master plan and verify it as a part of the consulting and hearing. The plan can be revised and changed as we progress, as I said earlier. It's important to put out that the plan is critical for the future, specifically to provide access to better green opportunities for the Borough. This will be a multi-phase meeting, and that will take time. Live streaming, we launched the live streaming, TK1 installed, the cable and camera laptop, the live streaming, there was some audio issues after it was installed. Apparently, the Borough's microphone audio system would not interface with the new equipment. Today, TK1 had to replace the piece of equipment so the sound would work properly. Tonight's meeting will serve as a live show contest once everything checks out after tonight's test. They had the live stream reached through the Borough website and advertised the new technology, so residents will start watching these meetings. As a good reminder, Borough Administrator, I just want to thank you all for the support. I speak now with myself and Lenny Vidal. I want to share our initial plans to improve efficiency, communication responsiveness across all departments. Lenny Vidal will be holding our first apartment meeting tomorrow morning. The primary focus of this meeting will be review our collective commitment to communication and responsiveness, both internally and to the public. Our goal is to strengthen collaboration between departments, ensure that residents receive timely and effective service. Improving responsiveness will be the key part of this effort, helping us deliver service more efficiently and address issues quickly as they arise. Lenny Vidal will forward to working with all departments to meet these goals, and a consistent part of our daily operations. Lastly, as you said, I'll repeat it, which is I gave you for mentioning, I want to mention to ask our Borough Secretary, Anthony Vitri, they were close to COVID enforcement, he's 86 years old, his family had a funeral just last week, and I asked that to talk to Anthony, and he was standing there for us.
Thank you, man.
Excuse me.
Joe?
What, what time is your meeting tomorrow? 10:00 AM? I'll provide some refreshments.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Anybody have any questions for, for Matt?
It's Lincoln.
Or Lenny?
I'd just like to comment that it's been a breath of fresh air for us. We've seen increased communication through this board, I know, recently, so I think we're off to a great start. I think it's going to be a great one for us.
Great job.
Thank you, Bobby.
Both of you.
Okay, guys, we're going to move on to privilege of the floor. Do I have the motion to open the privilege of the floor?
Motion.
Motion, second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The floor is open.
Good afternoon, everybody. Good evening, rather, to the council. Name is Vincent Ralph, 6th Washington Avenue, Middlesex. Just wanted to speak to the business administrator position that I see now that had been filled in term by our chief police and our deputy, excuse me, our DPW, DPW director. First, I would like to say in the outset that those two, these two gentlemen are outstanding gentlemen, number one, and they have done a great job at the work that they do in their positions, whether you are white, black, orange, or purple, whether you are Democratic, Republican, or, they treat everybody the same and make sure the job gets done. So they have done a yeoman's job, and I would like to say, secondly, that because of the fact that they are now taking on another position, it, it boggles my mind, because evidently, since I've been living here, this is the third time that this position has switched. So evidently, somebody don't know how to hire a business administrator. Middlesex Borough is, I'm guestimating, is about a $20 million, $25 million corporation, and we need a business administrator and not have to switch every other year. And so I would say this, that if these two gentlemen are voted upon to do this, that they receive everything that they need to get the job done, because we want them to leave here with an unstained, as unstained person as they have been. Their reputation is very good, and we want it to remain that way when they release these positions. And so I'm asking to make sure that the mayor and the council make sure that they have everything they need to make sure that this get done, because all of the town is watching to make sure that this happens, including myself. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Bruce?
Bruce Sanders, 10 Menace Avenue. First, I want to say, there's a big wet spot, and I promise I didn't pee on the floor back there. So, secondly, and I can't figure out if it's on the ceiling, first of all, is it through?
Lenny, do you want to?
Okay, I'm like, looking at it, and I'm like, what could that be?
He left it there for you, Bruce.
Yeah, that's right. I walked over there, I'm like, what, I didn't do it. Yeah, that's right. I walked over there, I'm like, what, I didn't do it. It wasn't me. All right, second thing, we talk about communication. The September 23rd video is still not up from, on the website, so we may want to see about getting that up.
Okay.
On the website. Thirdly, and I just don't want this to fall through the cracks, I talked to Mr. LaPla several times. Middlesex County and Somerset County had made a deal for a parcel of land, you know what I'm talking about, for the Revolutionary Bound Brook Revolution.
On the river.
Yeah, on the river. And I gather we were collecting taxes on that. He was going to look into some kind of agreement that, and I don't know if anything's, I figure you wouldn't have anything right now with everything changing, but I don't want that to be dropping through.
Thank you, Bruce. No, unless anybody knows, I have no idea. So we talked about that several times. It's $37,000 a year, I think, and $35,000 a ratable, so, and it's now part of Somerset County, and we lost that revenue, and they were supposed to make good. So.
Well, since we have a new administration type of thing, just so that doesn't, doesn't fall through.
Thank you. Matt and Lenny, if you could check into that. I know there's some emails, if you check his emails, they'll be in there, and when the mayor gets back, I may have two. So.
Yeah, I just, you know, I know you guys are working on a lot of stuff, I just figured.
Thank you for bringing that up. Thank you.
Good evening. Monica Townsend, 120 Barber Place. I just want to say congratulations to the fire department for that grant. I think that's a wonderful thing that they're doing, and just kudos to the grant writer and to the fire department, you know. It's hard for getting grants these days, and just, you know, they did, I guess they did an awesome job, so I'm just happy to hear that. And I'm also happy to hear about the live stream. You know, that's been sort of a bone of contention for residents for a while now, so I thank you for the interim borough administrator and our deputy administrator for working on that, and the council as well. So I just wanted to know, do you have a point person who's working on the live stream?
Matt, is that, well, we do. We have an IT vendor each year. His name is Telly. He's with TK1, so he was responsible for this. He put it up, he installed it, he ordered all the, all the components and everything, so. But Matt or Lenny would be your point person. They work with him. They were here to, I think he was here today with his team, right, to put it up. So is that what you're asking?
Yeah, just because I know that, again, that's been a concern for residents for a while now, so I just want to know, like, if there are future concerns, who would we contact and reach out to? So thank you for that.
And then Monica, we're going to have it set, so this is a test tonight, and it's, you know, we're going to work out all the kinks. So the 28th, the next meeting, it should be ready to go from that meeting onward.
Okay, awesome. And then I think I heard in the report about landlord registration? I forget where it was. Can you explain a little bit more about what that is?
So we, we have an ordinance, it's not new at this point. It's, how many years old?
Oh, God, it was, gotta be, no, it's more than that. It's gotta be 10 years old.
So 10 years old, we revised it three years ago, roughly?
Yeah.
Two and a half, three years ago. And we just updated it. We increased the fees. So for, like, the first seven or eight years, it was 50 bucks per rental unit, and it went up to 150 bucks per rental unit. And at the time, just basing it on, just going off my memory, we used some of the nearby towns. I know Bound Brook was one of them that we used to come up with that. So part of that is, every three years, our construction zoning officer, code enforcer will inspect, needs to inspect. So by law, he can inspect, and that is for fire suppression, fire sprinklers, smoke detectors, CO detectors, stuff like that. That was a big part of why we did it, because fire calls during those years were through the roof for mostly smoke detectors. So we hope that that's obviously going to cut down on, you know, fire calls, in addition to, we've had a lot of fires, people that have been displaced, so hopefully that can get all of these rental units safer. So it's every three years, the cycle is, Matthew Dillingham is brand new, he's only been here for a month. He's going to work out that cycle, but I know it's once every three years, right?
Every year for the fee, though.
Every year for the fee, the inspection's every three years.
It's within a three-year period, because we figured there's no way one person could inspect every single two-family apartment, you know, rental property in this town. It would be a monumental task.
Right.
For one person.
And I think we're going to add on there the lead paint. There's a, there's a new lead paint test that came out earlier this year that has to, for rentals. So that's also something I think he's going to add on to the list, which is mandated by the state.
Okay, thank you. And have we had an assistant borough administrator before?
Not that I know of.
Just, because it says interim.
Not that I, not that I know, no.
No, we don't think so.
Okay, so.
Like, old guy here?
So Lenny is our interim deputy borough administrator, and that's the first time we had this position, or no?
Yes.
Oh, it is, okay. And what was the decision and the rationale for having a deputy, first time deputy interim administrator?
I think it was just to, because obviously Matt is in a interim role, he's still the police chief and needs help. So.
And I know you said indefinitely, but I'm assuming there will be a process at some point, just to echo what Mr. Ralph said about the hiring process for a permanent person. So do you have a plan in place, or are you kind of sort of brainstorming now and figuring out the next steps?
Great question. We do not have a plan in place as of now. It's.
It's brand new.
Brand new.
Yeah.
So it could be three months, it could be six, nine, 12, it could be 36 months. So we really don't know. That's why it's interim, they're both interim. So, but I suspect, I think the mayor made some comments when this was announced, that his goal is early next year. You know, that could be the first quarter of next year, to reevaluate, to come up with a plan.
Thank you.
Just because we have two months left in the year, there's a lot of moving parts to close out the year. So we think it, you know, it'd be best to look at it early next year.
I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Any other public comments or questions?
Is there a job description for business administrator for Middlesex Borough that the public can see?
Yeah, there is. I don't know where it is, Vincent, but there was, the last time we interviewed, there was a, like, a two-page description. Do you know where that is, Lenny?
Okay.
You could?
Okay.
Which would be the last time we used it, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, anybody else? Can I have a motion to close the public portion?
Motion. Second.
Okay, second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, new business consent agenda resolutions. If Kelsey, you could read those resolutions by title, that would be great.
Resolution 267, 2025, authorizing the purchase of a new EDM roof from Chris Anderson Roofing, utilizing the Omnia contract in an amount not to exceed $130,000. Resolution 268, 2025, authorizing added tax lien for the cleanup costs inquired, sorry, incurred from violations of the property maintenance code. Resolution 269, 2025, authorizing the reimbursement of $25 to Mirror Image Barber Shop for overpayment on the reinspection fee. Resolution 270, 2025, acceptance of standing reports. Resolution 271, 2025, hiring Kevin Maza as a school crossing guard effective immediately. Resolution 272, 2025, declaring surplus. Resolution 273, 2025, appointing Matthew Geis as interim borough administrator on a part-time basis commencing on October 14th, 2025. Resolution 274, 2025, appointing Leonard Fidel as interim borough, interim deputy borough administrator on a part-time basis commencing on October 14th, 2025. Resolution 275, 2025, accepting resignation of borough administrator. Resolution 276, 2025, authorizing the entry into right-of-way agreements with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for blocks 219, Lot 2, block 221, Lot 1, block 280, Lot 1, 3, 7, 18, and block 296, Lot 41. Resolution 277, 2025, approval to advance police officer Joseph Sintola to police officer class H at an annual salary of $69,130, effective October 6, 2025. Resolution 278, 2025, approval of the 2025 sewer billing wage appeals. Resolution 279, 2025, authorizing added lien tax for the cleanup costs inquired from violations of the property maintenance code for block 295, Lot 43. Resolution 280, 2025, authorizing added lien tax for the cleanup costs inquired from violations of the property maintenance code for block 295, Lot 41. Resolution 281, 2025, authorizing the purchase of lighting and uplifting for two marked police patrol cars under the New Jersey State contract. Resolution 282, 2025, authorizing the purchase of one Ford F-350 cab and chassis dump truck under the state contract. Resolution 283, 2025, authorizing the purchase of Focus H2 in-car system for two marked police patrol cars under state contract. Resolution 284, 2025, authorizing the purchase of two Ford Utility Inceptor patrol cars under state contract. Resolution 285, 2025, 2025, 2026, Sustainable New Jersey PSENG Energy Efficiency Partnership Program. Resolution 286, 2025, authorizing the mayor to execute the HRA plan document effective January 1, 2026. Resolution 287, 2025, authorizing the mayor to execute the annual business associate agreement between EB Employee Solutions LLC and Middlesex Borough for 2026. Resolution 288, 2025, authorizing the mayor to execute the annual account service agreement between EB Employee Solutions and Middlesex Borough effective January 1, 2026. Resolution 289, 2025, appointing EB Solutions DBA as the difference card to provide HRA services for the Middlesex Borough for 2026.
Okay, is anybody?
Oh, one.
Joe? Okay, which, which one?
One.
Number one?
Yeah.
Number one?
Just have more.
The roof?
Gotcha.
Roof, yep. Okay, number one. Anybody else?
Uh.
Good, okay. All right, Kelsey, please take the, oh, I'm sorry.
Motion.
Motion approved?
Motion.
Second.
Second, okay. Roll call, please.
Council President Conahan.
Yes.
Councilman Carnes.
Yes.
Councilman DeSenza.
Yes.
Councilman DiCino.
Yes.
Councilman Doty.
Yes.
Councilman Greigs.
Yes.
Okay, Joe, number one, if I was going to ask.
Yeah, I just wanted, Bruce, that's why it's leaking. It sounds like a lot of money, that's all, 130,000.
For the roof?
Yeah.
Yeah, what's involved with that, Len?
The EDM roof, it's a 20-year warranty, so it's thirty, about everything, so various awards and what the police, they have. I had a line where he has.
Campers.
What's to get it for the, for the, for the, for the.
But it's been in the Capitol how long?
It's been in the Capitol for a couple weeks. This is probably for thirty years.
I was just going to ask, I thought it was more than 30.
Did, uh.
So they got rid of it.
Did we get any other bids?
It's understate, it's a national project.
Okay.
It's all good. I don't need it. I got another license and national.
Okay.
Yeah, because I remember, we remember early this spring, we had water on that table.
Yeah.
Yes. The whole process.
I wanted more explanation, that's all.
Bring that water. Timeline is by the end of the year, so.
Okay. Because if we do have snow up there, I mean, it could be a, yeah.
Don't even share.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Thank you, Len. Okay, motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second, okay. For resolution number 267-2025, can you take the roll call?
Council President Conahan.
Yes.
Councilman Carnes.
Yes.
Councilman DeSenza.
Yes.
Councilman DiCino.
Yes.
Councilman Doty.
Yes.
Councilman Greigs.
Okay, motion passes. Moving on to non-consent agendas, we only have one, resolution 290-2025, payall claims. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second, okay. Any comments? Good, okay. Can you take the roll, Kelsey?
Council President Conahan.
Yes.
Councilman Carnes.
Yes.
Councilman DeSenza.
Yes.
Councilman DiCino.
Yes.
Councilman Doty.
Yes.
Councilman Greigs.
Yes. Okay, agenda workshop, we do not have any tonight. We don't have, obviously, workshop, we're not going to have privilege of the floor for the workshop. Okay, moving on, last but not least, executive session. Kelsey, can you read the resolution?
Resolution 291, 2025, executive session.
Okay. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second, okay. Roll call, Kelsey.
Council President Conahan.
Yes.
Councilman Carnes.
Yes.
Councilman DeSenza.
Yes.
Councilman DiCino.
Yes.
Councilman Doty.
Yes.
Councilman Greigs.
Okay, there will be, no action will be taken tonight, and I need another motion to go into executive session.
Motion.
Motion?
Second.
Second, okay. Kelsey?
Council President Conahan.
Yes.
Councilman Carnes.
Yes.
Councilman DeSenza.
Yes.
Councilman DiCino.
Yes.
Councilman Doty.
Yes.
Councilman Greigs.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We're going to take a five-minute breather and clear the room. Thanks for coming.
Roll.
All right, Matt's staying.